The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in the public schools district and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If his speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. Seeing no one, we will move into the first regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Present.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Gailey.
Present.
Member Peña.
Present.
Member Reed.
Present.
Member Sadowite.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present. All, please rise for a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Isaiah Acevedio, classical high school student, passed away December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and Kyle Mel, classical high school student, December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you. First item is the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on December twelfth, two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second. And we can do them all at once if you want to do one more motion, all right?
Policy Subcommittee meeting on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, nineteenth regular meeting on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and first special meeting on January second, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. All fair?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. Next item is a presentation on MLE programming.
We have our interim executive director of MLE, multilingual education, Amanda Campbell, who's here to give us an update on the dual-language planning and programming specific to secondary schools.
While we are getting set up here, I also want to welcome our student representative, Nevin Gonzalez-Cohen.
Yeah, really good.
And appreciate him being here. You're doing great, Rob. Thank you.
Good to know.
I think this is his last.
Last one, Nevin?
Last one. Yeah, yeah, so. We've really enjoyed having you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
(Applause)
Technical difficulty here. Think you got it.
Touch it.
Nobody breathe. All right. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me and Happy New Year. I have just a few quick slides to give you an overview of dual language as it exists now in LPS, as well as our vision for the future. There we go. So first, a really quick lay of the land of our current dual-language programs. For anyone who wants to know more, go into greater depth, just let me know. I'm happy to do so, but I've presented on it a few times and I don't want to drag it out. So Harrington opened in two thousand twenty, that was our first program, but planning began much, much earlier. Well-structured programs need a long runway of planning in order to be well-executed. So our Harrington program planning actually began in November of two thousand eighteen. Harrington's class size is slightly higher in dual language than in SEI, with an average of twenty-four students in dual language as compared to twenty-one in SEI. All told at Harrington, a total of two hundred and six students are enrolled in the dual-language program. In Connery, we began planning in January of two thousand twenty-one and opened in September of two thousand twenty-two. This was our second dual-language program. Again, similarly to Harrington, the average is slightly higher in dual language than it is in SEI. Grand total in the district, three hundred and three total students are enrolled in dual language. When the whole programs are built out at both schools, there will be over six hundred students enrolled in dual language at the elementary level. When I presented our updates here last year in January, I shared that we had received a four hundred thousand dollar competitive grant and that some of those funds would be used to explore secondary dual-language programming. With those funds, we convened a secondary dual-language transition team with a wide array of stakeholders, including teachers and building and district leaders. These funds were used to support bilingual endorsements for secondary teachers, and we also used it to build up our own foundational knowledge, learning more about secondary programming, visiting them, attending conference sessions, things like that. And so as a result of this work, the team is recommending that the district implement a program at Thurgood Marshall Middle School, which would open in the fall of two thousand twenty-six when Harrington students reach sixth grade. This would then also grow into Lynn English High School in the September of two thousand thirty-one when students reach ninth grade. Pending family interest, we would also consider exploring programs at Breeden and Classical opening in two thousand twenty-nine and two thousand thirty-one respectively. I'm sorry, it should be two thousand twenty-eight for Lynn English, I apologize.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight, twenty.
Twenty-nine, yep. Can't raise my own handwriting. Twenty-nine's correct. And so although the program openings will coincide with the arrival of elementary students to secondary, dual-language programs are much more inclusive than that and will include more than just students moving from elementary dual language into secondary. It will also include students who are recent arrivals to the United States, students with high degrees of Spanish proficiency as they come in from our other elementary schools or transfers from other dual-language programs. And so I've shared the benefits before a bunch of times and I've just got them listed out here for you to peruse. I want to highlight a couple of them. The first is the social-emotional aspect of it, as a lot of studies have identified that dual-language programs serve as like a soft landing space and a welcoming space for kids who have that difficult transition from elementary to middle school. It just serves as, you know, a slightly softer place to land in a harsh, somewhat harsh middle school environment. It's a hard transition to make, generally speaking, and dual-language can help support it. It also has been shown to build out deeper connections to culture and heritage for many students. And again, because of the inclusive nature of it, it allows students from a very wide variety of backgrounds to come together in these rigorous learning experiences. And for Lynn in our population, that's really important, given our newcomers and our students with limited or interrupted formal education. Your slide says secondary DL program structure. I really wanted to highlight, this is specific for the middle school, no planning for high school has started. And so in order for a secondary program to be considered a true dual-language program, they need to take at least half of their coursework in the target language, in our case, Spanish, and that includes their content courses. And so we have tentatively identified Spanish Language Arts, History, and some combination of the Unified Arts electives in Spanish, and that English Language Arts, Math, Science, Unified Arts electives, and an additional support block based on student need, those would continue to be offered in English. Again, these are tentative plans, based on our initial thoughts. We may ultimately change what's offered as new research comes out. And again, this is just for middle school. High school planning has not taken place at all and could potentially look very different. So that brings us to our work for the upcoming year. The already established secondary dual-language transition team has already begun meeting for the year, and we've outlined these items as our next step. The first, to conduct placement criteria and build those out, so we tentatively have an idea of how many students would be eligible for the program and what the criteria would be. To be clear, the criteria would not be anything related to academic performance, simply proficiency in Spanish, to ensure that students would be successful in high-level academic courses in Spanish. We would also conduct listening sessions with Harrington dual-language families to understand more about what their hopes would be, what their questions or concerns might be, and just really get their feedback as we design these programs. We also do still want to continue to grow our own knowledge. There are, truthfully, very few secondary programs in Massachusetts, and while we're excited to be at the forefront of this innovation, it does mean that we have to work a little bit harder to learn more about programs from places outside of Massachusetts. So in terms of funding, we are really excited to share that we have received nearly six hundred thousand dollars in a competitive DESI fund to support this work. Some of these funds have been earmarked specifically for secondary dual language. We're also using them to support ESL licensure for teachers who are interested in achieving it. It provides MTL course, MTL prep courses, MTL vouchers, and coursework with Salem State. And the same is true for the bilingual endorsement, MTL prep courses, MTL vouchers, and coursework through Boston College, all free of cost to educators. All told, twenty districts submitted grant applications and just seven received any amount of funding, and ours was the highest in the state, so we're really excited about that. So that's it for me. Quick and easy, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mary Peña.
Thank you for the presentation, Amanda. I had a question here. When you meet with stakeholders in the team, are you including the DEI team? Bobby Fish, just a...
No, but we could certainly add him in. It's really at the beginning, but that's a great point, yep.
Awesome. And I really like the fact, and I like to see more parent engagement, to see, you know, get some service, to see how they feel that the students are, how are they, you know, learning with the dual language? I'm excited about it. I like that, you know? And also, I just want to give big ups on the funding, the grant, you know, I mean, the six hundred thousand, the additional funding. That's nice. Every time we hear money coming into the district, it's awesome. It's a good thing to hear. You know, and the... That's good. I'm good with that.
In terms of parents or family and caregiver feedback, we do regularly collect it for our own internal program evaluation, and we have begun to receive some informal parental and caregiver feedback regarding a secondary program, as families have reached out to ask, if they're naturally wondering, hey, like, what might come next for my kiddo as they head to middle school? And this particular effort is to make sure that it's less informal and more systematic, so we're collecting it from a larger group rather than just from parents who are reaching out.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Mary Dugan, Mary Reed.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Great, as always, great presentation, very informative. And, you know, I'm really excited, just this forward-thinking and us being in the forefront of all this is really exciting to me, and I'm sure to the rest of the committee as well. Just a quick question, how's the interest level been in terms of teachers that want to get another license and have, how have you kind of put it out there for them?
Sure. So in terms of the bilingual endorsement, we prioritize teachers who are currently working in dual-language programs. The next tier of prioritization was teachers who are working in our World Language Program, as those folks would potentially be tapped in to teach most likely the Spanish Language Arts component. From there, we send out flyers sort of saying, hey, if you want more information, we do Zoom drop-in nights, in-person drop-in nights, just to really collect information. And what we have actually found is not everyone will reach out to us, but their colleague might hear about it and then say, hey, have you talked to so-and-so? Or they'll connect us to that person who ends up being really interested in it. And what I have found to be the best way for staff recruitment for bilingual education is by having a really strong and well-regarded bilingual program. Our program is very well-known in the state. There's a lot of respect for it, and I receive a lot of outreach from members of the Lynn community already, or folks who are looking to engage in the work here in Lynn because of our program reputation. So that's been the best way to recruit so far.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. It's great.
Mary Reed.
So obviously, these are the... Thank you for us, Amanda, this is awesome. I think we've all talked about the need for this at one point or another. So these are obviously the East Lynn Schools, English and Marshall. Are these going to be available to any students citywide, or would it be still based on district?
So I think that depends on where the district is at in terms of secondary programming. We'll follow whatever, you know, if the district still has secondary neighborhood programming, it's not really a decision I make. I follow, you know, right now at elementary, we have neighborhood schools, therefore the dual-language programs are neighborhood schools. If that were to ever change, we would also change accordingly. So right now, we plan for it to be the East Lynn neighborhood and kids who are districted there, which is why when we opened our second elementary program, we opened at Connery with the express understanding of, should we continue with a secondary program, then we would build up a pathway up through Breeden Classical as well.
Great, great. And just to follow up to that, so you mentioned that you're going to gauge family interest for the other two schools. Is there a specific measure, is it just through more informal channels of if there's a demand or something along those lines?
Yeah, so Connery is two years behind Harrington, so when they arrive at middle school in twenty-eight, we'll have already had a good understanding of what the program looks like at the middle school level at Marshall, and we'll also have a better understanding from our Connery families. So we'll be able to gauge demand of, this is roughly how many families or what percentage of families from Harrington to Marshall were interested, what the support was like from the community there, which then allows us to not fully accurately predict, as, you know, obviously communities vary from neighborhood to neighborhood, but to at least understand what that looks like here specifically in Lynn, rather than trying to use national modeling and data. But we would be able to then conduct surveys at Connery to gauge the interest, and we also have been using stamp testing data, which was given to all fifth graders last year, to identify roughly how many students at each elementary school and therefore following their path up. I know, for example, of all the fifth graders who took the test, I know how many went on to Breeden-Marshall and had certain levels of Spanish proficiency, which allows me to forecast overall who might be a potential candidate and then be able to reach out to those specific families to find out if they would be interested.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sorry, one last question. So are these going to replace the current SEI classrooms, or are these going to be in addition?
My best guess is that they're in addition to. Obviously, the numbers are, to be, we would always have both types of programming because families need choices in terms of where they place their English learners, and so there would always be both types of programs. We would have to see based on space whether we need both the same amount of one program as we add in the second one and whether we have the space to do so. So it could be that when you pull some kids into dual language, some of the SEI classrooms are no longer necessary. But fortunately, what we've found is that because there is such teacher turnover as teachers move into different buildings, very rarely have teachers been bumped out because of dual language. It simply takes over a vacant opening.
Thank you, Amanda, appreciate it.
Mary Galy.
Hi, Amanda. I don't recall ever having a discussion other than like a, an update of the K through five curriculum for the dual-language program. And now it's in this middle school, but there should be a vote from the committee that we put it into the middle school. So this, to me, this is just a presentation explaining what your wish list is for the future. Is that true?
I would defer to...
Yeah, so last year, when the update was given and the grant was, you know, information was shared about the grant, part of that presentation was that we would be looking at, because inevitably, these students are moving up into middle school and looking into it. You are correct that there's no vote being taken. This is just an update on looking at what are the options, what would, could we do, should these students, you know, should we continue with dual language into the secondary schools? But there's no vote being taken tonight. This is just for information.
Yes.
But I want to add that I do know that Dr. Alvarez has shared that, like, when we get to the high school level, she's looking at the International Backler, for high school level, and this is a natural progression for that. So I just, I know that it is something that Dr. Alvarez is interested in investigating, but there is no vote happening tonight.
Correct. And like, what I don't want to see is students at Harrington that are in this dual-language program are being siloed, moving up. I want them to have experiences like every other child in our system. So I wanted to point that out to the committee, that this has not been voted on, it's something we're investigating, we're looking at. And I, another question I have, and we're only on the third grade, we're only up to the third grade in this program. And the other question is, the monies that you are receiving through this grant, congratulations, how much are going into the high school program? Because remember, all those teachers came forward with concerns, and a lot of them were from the SEI program, the, at English High School and at Classical, how much money is going to go to provide them with support, them with textbooks, or whatever it is they need for our students in the high school?
Yep, so all of those programs are supported by district funds. These ones are specifically for what we've received funding under is through the bilingual hub designation, which is specifically to build out bilingual programming.
So wouldn't that include the ones at English or Classical?
We do not have current bilingual programming at English or Classical. We only have bilingual programming at Harrington and Connery.
Dual language?
Yes, dual language is bilingual education.
Okay, thank you.
Mary.
Go ahead.
Remember guys, Yannis. Amanda, thank you so much for your presentation and the follow-up. I have just some, a clarifying question around just the data piece. What progress monitoring or research method, current research method strategies that we use right now to capture the success? Because I know you've had a lot of success with the initial, since two thousand eighteen, we've had so much work done. You guys done, you guys been very busy. We've increased capacity at a high level, and we, you know, and going back to, you know, we're going to be looking to expand again, possibly, off, you know, the hard work of developing a opportunity like a grant that we got. I'm really interested in seeing how we establish the fundamentals of a progress monitoring tool that allows us to be sustainable, right? Like, if we're going to look at the secondary or middle school, we also need to make sure that we're still focused on elementary, so we could focus on each step in order to be stable. Like, I remember the pillars that we talked about and how important that was to make sure that we're gradually moving our learners forward without doing too much. So if we're going to implement another program, I think it's important to make sure that we capture the short scopes of data that you're doing now. So could you kind of walk me through that a little bit?
Yeah, of course. So I'll start at the very smallest level, which is our classroom data that teachers use to inform and drive instruction. That includes their formal and informal observations, which are captured via rubrics, checklist, things like that. That's nothing that's particular to dual language, that's typical early childhood and elementary practice. From there, we have screeners that we use in both language and literacy. We use those screeners to evaluate progress towards language proficiency in English in particular. We, the state requires us to do that, and we also use an early literacy screener, which is again required by the state, and so we use that information to identify progress towards literacy and language development. From there, we also have something that's called a parallel diagnostic assessment. The parallel part means we have it in both English and Spanish, so we can evaluate literacy as students are moving towards full bilinguality in both languages. We use that particular assessment, it's called the ANIEL in Spanish and the ERLA in English, was it ANGLIS? And that is what allows us to monitor individual student progress, as well as globally, how our kids making movement towards bilinguality. And so that's sort of at the, like, the nitty-gritty classroom level, what do we do? As we move into like a more programmatic evaluation, which is what I think you're asking for, I use all of those details, but instead of kid by kid, it becomes more classroom by classroom, grade by grade, more globally. And the most important piece is all of that information, and this is my responsibility as I lead the work, is to disaggregate it by various subgroups. So recently, when I reviewed our current data, I disaggregated by special education status, by English learner status, by race, by high needs, all the different subgroups that the state has identified as important to disaggregate by. And I use that, and I run it through some statistical software just to see, are there significant discrepancies between groups? And thus far, no, which is really exciting. It means all of our students are all making comparable levels of growth regardless of any of those types of designations. And then from there, we also collect teacher feedback. We collect that feedback on everything from curriculum implementation, professional development, just to really see, like, are our teachers growing? Is what we're doing helping teachers in the classroom? Typically, English learner programs, we're on a six-year evaluation cycle. We're at the midpoint where I do my own self-evaluation in the middle, and then in a couple of years, DESI will come and do their formal one.
Okay, now, yeah, that's excellent response. The benchmarks that you're, because we're doing innovative work, so we're kind of like the first, we're developing our own models, we're the ones pioneering it. What are some barriers to some of the, I guess, the successes? There's a lot of pressure with that, right? If the state's looking for you, looking for us as a district to kind of develop, be the first, right? We're going to be the model of other program, and what are some of those barriers that we are experiencing now?
So I think first of all, we're definitely pioneers in Massachusetts, but this particular type of programming is nationally very well-known and very well-researched, so we are really fortunate to rely, or to have national benchmarks, national norms, particularly on emergent bilingual populations, that really allow us to evaluate. Otherwise, if we were truly the first in the nation or the first in the globe, this would be a much more challenging exercise. But even globally, we're able to rely on Spanish literacy progress from Spanish-speaking countries, and that's really helpful. It's not quite the same because they're acquired, you know, they're in monolingual programs to acquire Spanish literacy. So I think some of the biggest challenges are definitely staffing. The state doesn't make it easy to license bilingual staff. They still have to take English language teacher licensure exams, even though they're going to be teaching in Spanish. There is no, I don't want to say no, that's not fair to the state, but the way that the state evaluates teacher competency to become a bilingual teacher is not the way any other state does it. And so we then internally have to do our own growth towards developing bilingual educators, evaluating Spanish proficiency, especially academic proficiency, to be able to teach academic concepts in Spanish. And so I think that's probably the biggest challenge, but we're really so fortunate to have such amazing teachers who are really deeply committed to the work, and that's why we're truthfully seeing any progress. You know, like, they're the reasons why we're doing it. I represent such an amazing team of really incredible educators who are, I'm just so incredibly proud of.
Thank you, Amanda. Members, anyway.
So I was also curious in the challenges that we faced as well, but since you did mention those, I'm just curious, like, what are we doing to make sure that we don't duplicate in these, once we're expanding these programs?
Yeah, so I think we have learned a lot from opening two programs previously. The first is the need for tailored TV specific to dual language and specific to bilingual education. And because when teachers go into schools, especially as the first group, they are the first and the only dual-language educators in that building, and so the amount of time and energy that it takes for them to set them, you know, to feel successful, and then the amount of coaching, support, leadership that it requires to make sure that they feel stable and successful, it's hard to be the first of anything, and it is definitely a challenge to go in and be the first dual-language educator in a building. And that's something we had anticipated, but not quite, you know, like, it's nothing until you do it. I think the other challenge is you can read about it all you want, you can learn everything about it, but when you go to implement it, it's just different in that experience. It's, it's easy to say, like, oh, if you've done it at Harrington, then you can do it at Connery, and if you've done it at Connery, then you can do it here. If you've done it in second grade, you can do it at third grade. Truthfully, every single year, every single grade level that we open the next one, even though Connery will go to second grade, we already have second grade at Connery, it's just as much energy and work, and it's also just as much enthusiasm, which is really exciting. The kids are excited, the families are excited, the teachers are excited. It's really energizing work, but it does, it's a lot of time and attention to make sure each grade level is just as set up as the one before.
Good, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And just lastly, I'm just curious, as to, as you mentioned, it's everyone, every, all of them are truly different, just as well as every school is truly different. Have we, have we gotten any, like, leadership feedback from the principals at the schools that you're going to implement in moving forward?
Yep, yeah, so for Thurgood-Marshall, Stephanie Dusat, who's the principal there, she's been a part of our planning work since... she's been a part of our planning work since we convened the team last December in 2022. And so she and her leadership team and some teachers and staff at Marshall have been a part of the work from the beginning as well. I like to think of it less as getting feedback from the staff and more as, like, co-designing the process, like, the, what's essential and what I really have learned from it is you need the whole team to buy into it deeply, to understand it, and to be just as passionate as I, I can talk about dual language all night, and you need them to feel just that same level of passion and enthusiasm for it, because ultimately, it's, it's my privilege to work with them to get the building to a place where they're ready for dual language, but ultimately, it is their dual language program, and so it's work being done alongside them rather than to them or even, like, for them. You know, it has to be done as a joint effort. So yes, I do collect feedback, but more so in, like, a design loop of what do you think about this? Let's problem solve it together. They bring specific issues about their building, like, hey, I'm troubleshooting this piece, and it is much more collaborative and more a partnership than it is me collecting feedback from them so that I can do something different to, at their building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for all the great work from, from the whole MLA team and educators. We really appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a field trip request for Classical students to marine biological laboratories in Woods Hole. What's the recommendation of the administration?
The recommendation is to approve. We have Dave Winchester here from Classical High School. Some of you who have been on the committee may remember. Mr. Winchester has been here for the past three? This is the third year.
This is the third year.
Third year. Asking for this approval, and I highly recommend approval.
Great, great.
I'll, I'll give you a quick history. You have a description of the graduate-level course that the Classical students will be participating in with three of our teachers, science teachers will be going with them. This is the third year, a, a very generous donor, Saul Pennell, excuse my voice, who is a graduate of Lynn Classical, 1967, is a trustee of the Marine Biological Lab, and he decided three years ago that he wanted to get some Classical kids down there. In the winter, nobody goes to Woods Hole. It's, if you accidentally drive through Falmouth, it's what you bump into. It's a little street of a town with a bunch of crazy scientists who work there year-round, but most go there in the summer because it's the Cape. And so they use their graduate instructors, the spaces, $500,000 microscopes, and they let our kids use it like it's theirs. And so this will be our third year. We live there for a week. They have a dorm that will have three teachers who live there too. Everybody has, we pair up the kids and the teachers are solo. And it, the, so it's free. The only cost of the district is, we're going to pull three teachers out of their classrooms for five days, which is a hardship for the students left behind, but the benefits of those teachers, I think, far outweighs any harm that that might cause. And we time it perfectly, so a quarter ends and we're at the beginning of a new quarter, and it's more of a transition period, so nothing really key or critical, no testing is happening. So that's the history. If you have any questions or clarifications about the course, what goes on down there, fire away.
Questions? Member Castellanos?
I'd make a motion to move forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satoa?
Yes.
Congratulations and thank you for this work. It was a really great opportunity. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Next item is a request to accept the following donations to benefit the community service project for LBTI's chapter of Skills USA.
You can see a whole list there of donations that they have acquired, and I highly recommend that we approve this. I think we know the, how special Skills USA is and the work that they do, and this certainly helps them.
Member Gailey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the following donations to benefit the community service project for Lynn Tech Skills USA.
Second.
Second.
Why don't we, I'll read them out quickly to thank our companies here. GVW Inc., Swanskit Refrigeration Inc., Transonic Companies, Deulis Brothers Construction, Boys and Girls Club of Lynn, Lynn Donuts Inc., Camp Lion of Lynn, Old Mill Realty Investors LLC, Knights of Pythias of Massachusetts. Thank you to our generous donors. And roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satoa?
Yes.
And communications.
Okay, you have, in the communications section, you have the list of school committee meetings for the year, so please put it in a safe place, or put it in your calendars. And you also have the enrollment report, and then I'm going to read Dr. Alvarez's superintendent report, but at the end of it, you'll see there's some updates from different departments. I'm not going to read those. That's for your information. The arrival of 2024 brings a sense of renewal and a chance for growth, and the opportunity to embark on new academic journeys. For students returning to classes, it symbolizes a learning chapter waiting to unfold. We approach the coming year with minds, open minds, curiosity, and a commitment to embrace education's challenges. We welcome the return of students to their academic pursuits. It's crucial to recognize the significance of Martin Luther King Day. This day commemorates a visionary leader who cap, who championed equity and justice and served as a reminder of the power of education in shaping a more inclusive society. Martin Luther King Jr. was a staunch advocate for peace and a proponent of nonviolent conflict resolution. His philosophy, rooted in principles of love, justice, and equity, emphasized that true peace goes beyond the presence of tension. It is the presence of justice. In King's teachings, nonviolence resistance was not passive, passive acceptance of injustice, but an active courageous stance against it. He envisioned a world where conflicts were resolved through dialogue, understanding, and a commitment to justice rather than violence. His leadership during the civil rights movement demonstrated the effectiveness of nonviolent protest as a force for change. At LPS collectively, we are pledging to live up to these expectations. On January 3rd, our community came to the steps of City Hall to promote peace in our city. We want a better future for our community and the youth in Lynn. Therefore, we are partnering with our local organizations to engage students as we focus on restorative practices. We look forward to developing character education to stress the importance of making good choices, promoting peace, and conflict resolution through our K-12 school supports. In his 1967 speech, "The Other America," Dr. King envisioned all children growing up in the sunlight of opportunity. Honoring such a vision means creating and sharing spaces where voices are heard and ideas blossom. We want to recognize our students' and teachers' voices as we launch our first meetings for Centering Youth Voices and the Teachers Superintendent Cabinet this month. The elementary school cabinet will have their first meeting on January 18th, followed by the secondary school cabinet meeting on January 25th. These meetings will provide an opportunity to open dialogue about our collective priorities and how we shape the student experience. The inclusion and amplification of student and teacher voices are integral to the success of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, or DEIB initiatives within educational settings. Both students and teachers bring unique perspectives and experiences that contribute to a richer, more comprehensive understanding of the diverse challenges and opportunities within the learning environment. Student voices are crucial in shaping DEIB efforts as they provide insights into their lived experiences. Empowering students to express their perspectives fosters a sense of belonging and ownership within the school community. By valuing and incorporating their voices, we can tailor their strategies to address specific needs and create a more inclusive and supportive learning environment. Similarly, teachers play a pivotal role in the DEIB efforts. Their perspectives, informed by their experiences in the classroom, contribute to the development of inclusive curricula and teaching methods. Including teachers in decision-making ensures that DEIB initiatives are well-intentioned, but also practical and effective in real-world educational settings. Teacher voices provide crucial insights into professional development, curriculum design, and school policies, creating a collaborative and responsive approach to fostering equity and belonging. In essence, the collaboration and inclusion of student and teacher voices are fundamental to creating an, an educational environment that embraces diversity and actively works towards equity and inclusion, fostering a sense of belonging for all. As we look forward to the overarching theme of the next few months, we will focus on student choice for curricular program offerings and continue to highlight student success and brilliance. In sharing student news, Breed and Thurgood Marshall Middle School students joined over 1,200 eighth graders at the Heinz Convention Center for the Junior Achievement Inspire Interactive Career Exploration Fair. Students learned about various careers from professionals during this impactful and inspiring event and were recognized by Junior Achievement. Additionally, I would like to congratulate the LBTI Boys and Girls Basketball Teams for reaching the finals of the Walter J. Boverini Tournament. I also want to send a special thank you to the Lynn Rotary for their generous dictionary project at our elementary schools, and to the music and band teachers, Julie Carroll, and all the students who performed throughout the month of December and for the inauguration. Lastly, a special welcome to our new school committee members, Sean Reed and Andrea Satoa, and all the returning members. We look forward to working together and reimagining the student experience to ensure that all students achieve their fullest potential.
I will echo those words and welcome Member Satoa, Member Reed. It's wonderful to have you. Welcome back to the returning members. Very excited to begin 2024 with you all, and see no further business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourned, thank you.
It's the shortest meeting you're ever gonna have.
That's a record. That's, that's a record.
Also, thank you for these wonderful pens, yeah.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome for the pens.
Yeah.
We gave them to all the staff. Administration.
This is all bad.
Oh, wait, buddy, we got a bunch of ones.
Yes, I'll make sure.